Good morning. Welcome to the Tuesday Sarah Stevenson Tuesday Morning Forum. We're so happy that you're here this morning. I am Mary Johnson, I will be facilitating along with Ms. Laura McClain, Jackie Edwards-Walton, Natalie Miguel-Rav, who is our timekeeper. And she will let you know when your time is up. We have Steve Johnston at the computer. We also have Mr. Thomas Moore, who is our musician. Thank you. Our forum runs from 8:30 to 10:00. And we will pause shortly before that for announcements from the audience. We always start with a prayer and Mr. Ricky Robbins, candidate for chair, has graced us with a prayer this morning.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. I'm just a second. Dear Lord, we want to thank you for allowing us to see another beautiful day. We want to ask that you watch over each and every one of us as we get through this forum. These are men of blessed lives, we ask you in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much. Okay, do we have any first timers here? Anyone here for the first time? Okay, we're all family here today. Okay, so we all know the rules that we allow our candidates to speak. And then we will take questions from the audience. Make sure you raise your hand because we take questions in the order that you raise your hand. Okay? And when you stand to ask a question, would you please state your name? That really helps a lot if you state your name first. I'm going to ask you to silence your phones. If you have your cell phones, let's put them on silent. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to introduce our guest this morning. We have City Council District Three, Ms. Joy Mayo is here. And we have Ms...
Robin Emmens.
Robin Emmens? I'm looking at it. Yeah, Larry. Okay. We also invited Mr. James Bowers, and he's not here. Maybe he... maybe he... oh, he's not coming. Okay, thank you. But he was invited. And then we have, later on, we're going to have Dolores Johnson-Hurd and Everett Blackman of the Charlotte Macklinburg Black Heritage Committee. Okay? They're on the November 15th Theresa Elder Trailblazer Award Luncheon. So they will come and talk about that. So I'm going to let each of you introduce yourselves. And maybe you can have, I'm not sure, you know, your usual speech, you know, of introduction. And then after that, we will take questions from the audience. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mary. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, Tuesday Morning Forum. It's wonderful to be with you again. My name is Robin Emmens. And I'm honored to be here today as the independent candidate running for Charlotte City Council District Three. I want to make clear that my life's work has been about service, from feeding families to mentoring young people and fighting for housing and healthcare access. I chose to run because I believe District Three deserves leadership that listens to all voices and works across differences in to get results. Our neighbors care about safe housing, well-being, transportation, good jobs, and thriving small businesses in District Three. And that's where I want to focus. So I don't come with any agenda other than serving people, which is why I have chosen to run as an unaffiliated candidate. I want to be about the people's business, the people's needs, and not a party's agenda. So I'm running in that spirit. And I'm looking forward to this conversation today and taking your questions. I hand it over to my colleague and challenger, Joy Mayo.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. No worries. Good morning. My name is Joy Mayo. I am a Democratic candidate for District Three for Charlotte City Council. So I am a former CMS teacher. I taught middle school math and social studies right in southwest Charlotte, southwest middle school. I'm a neighborhood leader and the founder and board chair of Transforming Nations Forward, a community development nonprofit, working to bring investment, opportunity, and improve safety in one of Charlotte's most overlooked areas, Nations Forward Corridor. So I'm really proud of the work that we've done with Transforming Nations Forward. I see firsthand what happens when government agencies are not investing and being intentional when it comes to a community. And that's really why I decided to run, because I saw a lack of intentionality in an area where, you know, I really believe that investment is needed, particularly for our young people. So excited for this new opportunity. I bring innovative ideas, fresh energy, also lots of energy, if you know anything about me. And it's really a willingness to work and serve. So super excited for this opportunity. One, to serve as a Democratic candidate for Charlotte City Council District Three. As I've talked about in my platform, I am all about safe and inclusive communities. I believe our neighborhood leaders often know what the issues are in their neighborhoods. And we should be empowering them to help create the change that they want to see in their neighborhoods. I'm also a big fan of how do we increase opportunities? Not just for young people, but for our seniors to be able to age in place safely and respectfully in a way that honors what they have brought to this community. And lastly, I am a huge proponent, as an environmentalist, of smart growth model. How do we create 10-minute cities where people are able to get to essential services without having to just rely on a car, right? I don't know about you, but I was in a car for about 30 minutes today getting here. And that's not great. How can we be thoughtful of how we create a city where people can get to services? That can be going to the pharmacy, going to the doctor, going to the grocery store within a 10-minute commute. And that commute doesn't just have to be within a car. It can be walking, taking some type of public transit, or biking. So super excited to bring some great energy and some great ideas as a District Three representative for Charlotte City Council. So I'm Joy Mayo. Please go to my website to learn more. My name is both of I, you know, moms, J-O-I, and appreciative. And looking forward to chatting more today.
Okay, we are ready to open up for questions? Okay.
Well, I have a question for each of the candidates. But Joy, you said something that piqued my interest. You stated that it took 30 minutes for you to arrive here today. How long do you think it's going to take with public transportation?
I think it depends. So we're very close to Noda in this area. I live right off the light rail. So maybe an easy 10-minute commute to the Arch Arrowood Light Rail Station. So I think that us being thoughtful of creating housing and opportunities and investment near existing transit is important, not just in highways. So I just saw, was it yesterday? One of your members actually was talking about McCory Heights potentially seeing additional destruction because of the expansion of the 77 Highway. I think that we have to invest in more than just roads, particularly when we know that highways have gone through black and brown communities. So I think that we have to be thoughtful. How are we growing a community so that we can thrive? Particularly historically underserved communities that are bearing the brunt of the expansion that Charlotte is seeing in growth.
I can't understand what you're saying. Do you have a question?
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you speak a little bit about your legacy there in District Three? Having started with Ron Leeper being the first elected District Three rep once we moved away from at-large candidates. Yes, please.
Ms. Jackie, let me be sure that I understand your question. You're asking about our individual legacies following Ron Leeper's leadership?
So his legacy.
His legacy?
Yes.
Ron Leeper's legacy, certainly. So certainly, Ron Leeper has been a trailblazer in really building out infrastructure in District Three and advocating for investments in District Three. Of course, you know, he's well-known across this community and continues to be a symbol of how we can sit in a seat and really be a champion for change.
Thank you. So I have the pleasure of Ron Leeper, the first District Three representative, actually endorsing me and my candidacy. He's been a strong supporter of my run for Charlotte City Council. I sent email blasts and I'm very proud of that. He has been a great mentor to me. We've had a lot of conversations about his legacy, particularly when it comes to community benefits agreements. And I think this is something that we have to be really thoughtful, particularly as the airport continues to grow and expand and negatively impact black and brown communities. I keep harping on that. I am a history major. All my degrees are in history. I like to look back on systemic injustices and how that has impacted our community. Ron Leeper and I have had a lot of conversations about how, when he was a District Three rep, he had conversations with homeowners and worked with the city to make sure that they were receiving support that they need. So that can include new windows to help with noise mitigation, also helping with insulation. So I think it's important, one, as a District Three representative, to have strong relationships with previous representatives so that we can make progress from the work that they've done. Oftentimes, our elected officials are doing great work. How can I continue that work and that legacy and build upon that? So I'm very proud of the work that I have already had with former council member Ron Leeper. Excited to continue his legacy and for him to continue to mentor me. And it means a lot that he has... He believes that I am the best candidate to represent District Three.
I have a question. Can each of you share the most significant thing that you've done in this community to accentuate especially what has happened to the black community as we have grown in Charlotte? What you've done to make a significant contribution to our world as African-Americans? Both.
Thank you, Ms. Mary. I appreciate the question. So I would point to my founding of the nonprofit So Much Good, an organization that received national attention relative to food justice and food inequities in our community, advocating for food justice and equitable investments and relative to a basic human need and a fundamental right for people to have access to enough food. And so I have championed that in honor of the country and out of town in Charlotte, speaking about what is absent that is readily available in other communities. Also, I have used that work and that national attention that has been brought to the organization that I founded back in 2008 to really speak to other issues that are affecting communities of color, relative to displacement, lack of housing, lack of economic opportunities. So I continue to champion those things and speak loudly about them and really collaborate across lines of differences to figure out how we can have a more equitable share of the prosperity of the city. And I will continue to do that as the District Three representative.
Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk more about the service that I've provided to District Three. So I've lived in District Three for about 10 years. I purchased a home through Heights Good Neighborhood Store Program, which is a program for public servants, firefighters, teachers, EMTs, so that they can live in the community where they serve. So I actually taught to students in my neighborhood. Immediately upon living in Kings Creek, which is where I live, off Nations Forward Arrowood, I really realized, one, that there was a lack of opportunities and investment in that area. And that's partly why, there are a couple of things that I've done. First thing I did as HOA president, which I did for nine years. I just wrote off the board in December. If anyone has been HOA president, you know, that's not always fun, but it's about getting the work done and doing what's right for the community. As the HOA president, we were able to keep corporate landlords out of our neighborhood. And this is because of my intentional leadership. Because of our CCRs and bylaws, only 20% of the actual housing should be rental units. So for the last nine years, we've created a pathway to affordable homeownership so that people can buy townhomes and single-family homes in my neighborhood for less than $250,000. So when we talk about the lack of opportunities here in Charlotte, part of that is affordability. People being able to purchase homes in the community where they live. And that is something that I am very proud that I did as the president of my HOA, and that is continuing now. So one thing I think is important as a District Three representative is creating the infrastructure so that people can be successful. And that is the type of leadership that I will bring as a District Three representative. Listening, understanding the problems, and creating real solutions for everyday people right here in District Three. I also want to talk a little about Transforming Nations Forward. I am very proud of the work that we have done in that organization. We have created opportunities for everyone to serve. I think oftentimes, when people have neighborhood associations, we want to make sure that we're bringing young people in the fold. We want to make sure that we're bringing diversity in the fold as well. And we have Latinx population, young, African-Americans, Caucasians as well. Because together, we can create the change that we want to see in our community. And I think that's important, that we're empowering people, we're giving them the tools to be the change that they want to see in the community. So I'm very proud of the work that I've done in District Three. I hope that there'll be great things when people talk about my legacy and the fact that I'm creating opportunities for other people, not just myself.
Good morning, Robyn Collins. What I'd like to know is, in these battles, I'll call them, we always find things about the other person that we want to say that we are better at. What is something that you heard the other person say that you either admire about them or that you wish to be more like?
Nice question. Thank you for that question. I really appreciate that. I think it's important that we also uplift each other. While Robin and I are opponents, we're also friends. We chat often. We have a lot of the same goals for District Three. Just because we're opponents, I don't think that means we have to be nasty or rude to other people. So that's something that I'm really proud of with my campaign. I focus on the race. I don't need to say mean things about people because that's just not who I am. And that's not the type of person that I want to be. So I would start with that. But one thing I really admire about Robin, I love the food justice policy that she works for with her nonprofit. I think that's very important. When we talk about District Three, District Three is very diverse, right? When we talk about West Boulevard, we know that the area is a food desert. And the West Boulevard Neighborhood Coalition is working with it to create the Three Sisters Market. This is a legacy of what Robin is doing, for making sure that black and brown communities have the resources that they need. And part of that is access to healthy food. When we look at obesity rates and all the things that are going on in black and brown communities, access is the most important thing. And I think that's great that she has raised that platform, really helped to elevate the idea that this is important in our community. And I'm excited to get to see her legacy. So thank you so much for your question. I think that is so important, particularly in our communities. Because we want, we want, we know that what we consume, not only food, but also media, affects us mentally and physically. So I think that she's doing great.
Thank you for the question, Mary. And good morning. I... thank you, Joy, for the time.
Yes, ma'am.
I really appreciate this question because I think that our politic has gotten so ugly and so nasty, not just here locally, but nationally. I think that the cacophony of noise and vitriol is really creating an even deeper chasm between people. And I think there are more people that are closer to the middle than at the far right or left. And so I make it a point, is my ethos and part of who I am to always be kind. The world is a very small place. And so Charlotte is growing greatly, but the city is still small because there are two degrees of separation rather than six, particularly given social media and the way they were connected online. So for Joy, I have seen her run a really strategic campaign, and I admire that about her. This is a really tough road. There's a lot of pressure. And so she has really exercised grace under tremendous pressure. I will say that I've had the privilege of watching her run as an independent because I didn't have the opportunity to get on the ballot immediately. I had to collect 1,500 signatures over the course of a very hot summer to get here. So I just arrived. So I've been in candidate forums. I've been at other venues where I have seen her just hold herself together under tremendous pressure. And so I really admire the way she's running her campaign with integrity and grace. So that would be my admiration mark.
Thank you.
Okay, Ricky, yes.
Good morning. Richard Robbins, candidate for chair. A question for both of you. The youth is our vision for tomorrow. So under your leadership, what programs or what would you do to collaborate, work with government, law enforcement schools, to ensure that our youth are seeing a better vision and trying to keep them out of jails and employed somewhere down the road? So how can you help the community, especially with the youth?
I think of, as a former teacher, I taught for 12 years before I now work at an environmental nonprofit. I think the young people are so important. How do we provide access for them? This is part of the reason why I ran for office. In Nations Forward, we don't have any place for our kids to go. There is no recreation center. We have parks, but those parks are very outdated. Conversations I had were park and rec. I like, I'm a data nerd, so I like to look at the data. And our parks are rated Ds and Fs. That's unacceptable. That is not okay for our young people. Or just people in general in our communities. And I have no problem saying that county commissioners, the new park and rec person, because that is not, that is not okay. Sorry, I feel very passionate about that. Yes, sir. So one thing I think about keeping our young people out of jail, I'm very proud of the work that we've seen with Alternatives to Violence in Nations Forward and also West Boulevard. So the city and the county have had a lot of investment with Alternatives to Violence Program, helping people, not only young people. I'm always surprised looking at the stats by the people who are getting involved in violent crimes. And it can be as young as 12, as up to 35. And I think it's important that people have someone to talk to, which I think is why I'm a really big fan of the ATV program. It's helping our young people who maybe are already caught up in the system to figure out what are some strategies and solutions to create real change. I know for the Nations Forward one, ours is collaborating with Urban Ladies Central Carolina's. And they bring those wraparound services to the work that they do. And that really helps with workforce development. So I think that's important, that we are thinking holistically about people, not just about how do we keep people out of jail. There are reasons why people may be getting involved in crime, right? Maybe they can't feed their family. Maybe they don't have a place to live. How do we bring all of those strategies and all of the support that people need so that they can do better? So I think there are a lot of conversations to have in the city and the county and the state about how do we create the infrastructure and wraparound services to help all of our residents, particularly our young people. And very excited, whatever goes down, as this phrase, to have real conversations about community benefits agreements. How do we make sure that everyone in the community gets a piece of the pie? Not just the 1%. How do we create workforce development so that people can have the training to create jobs or to have these new jobs that are coming to Charlotte? We're not just training outside people. We need to take care of home first. Sorry.
Thank you, Joy.
Sorry, I'll get on the radio.
I really appreciate the question. And it's really timely relative to my time spent this morning. So I was up early this morning. I was attending a breakfast at the relatives for their EUA fundraiser initiative. I'm just thinking about young people who are unhoused, young people who are faced abused and neglect, and really don't have anyone else. And so I think that we have to bring all stakeholders to the table. You mentioned CMS, you mentioned the city, you mentioned the county. I think it's going to take all of us to figure out how we build youth diversion programs and initiatives to really engage people. I agree with what Joy mentioned around not so much asking the what question, but the why. Like access to economic opportunity and mobility. How do we create programs for people to, who are young, to get skills? Particularly if you think about this holistically, where we know that AI and technology is going to be taking over entry-level jobs. And so that, that part of the workforce economy is falling away. So even less opportunities for young people to earn, learn how to live, earn a living, and make a life for themselves and communities. So how do we get out of our silos, really get all stakeholders to the table and understand that investing in our youth is really, really critical to not just the growth of our city, but also our economic vitality as a city and our reduction of crime? Like public safety is more than just policing. We cannot police our way to safety. We need to be investing in young people and creating opportunities for all. And so I would say, as your District Three representative, I would be really committed to collaborating with those various stakeholders across CMS, across the county, and of course, colleagues on the city council to figure out how we, we have a program with the city, right? Where if you graduate from high school, you can go directly into a city job and start making money right away. But we know that a lot of our kids are falling under the gaps. And so we have to think of them to, what's the safety net that we can create to make sure that they are not lost to the prison industrial complex, but they are engaged in our city and a part of our shared prosperity here?
It's getting late. Almost nine, so we better ask you to keep your answers to a minute.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. I know.
Good morning. My name is Patty. Here. I know, we talk a lot about, it's almost like everybody else except for the mentally ill and the homeless. What are your views? What are your, what are your thoughts?
Ms. Patty, let me be sure that I understand your question. Are you asking about the unhoused in our city and homelessness? Did I understand you correctly?
I'm asking about your area, your district. And it's in every area, every district, the mentally ill, the homeless. What are we going to do about them? It's like we are almost taking care of everybody else. Not taking care of them, but we're addressing everybody else's needs. It's what about, because I see the mental illness, it is rampant. It is rampant. The homelessness, it is rampant. You see people in the woods. And a lot of it comes down to when you don't have the money. Because what I see, it's all about the coins. It's all about the money.
No doubt, Ms. Patty, we live in this capitalist structure, which can be violent and is about the most vulnerable. And I think that the measure of society is progress is measured by how we treat the wealthy, the powerful, is how we treat the most vulnerable among us. And I appreciate this question deeply because many people who know me and know my story of how I ended up starting a nonprofit will know that I left a very lucrative corporate career to start this nonprofit, So Much Good, that I founded in 2008 because I have a brother who's living on the streets of Charlotte for a decade, suffering from homelessness and undiagnosed schizophrenia, right? Invisible in a city full of people and excluded economically, excluded from housing opportunities, really, really challenging. And then circumnavigating a very complex system to get guardianship for him and to keep him from being incarcerated for the prime of mental illness. So I think that as we have this conversation about public safety, we have to think about it holistically. We need comprehensive public safety that includes people. I'm so sorry. Thank you, Ms. Patty. I'm happy to have a further conversation and talk more about your questions, Ms. Patty. But basically, we need to be thinking about mental health services, policing, and a whole host of comprehensive public safety to address this issue, including housing wraparound services.
Thank you. Thank you for this question. I think that is very important. I think the city needs to continue to partner with different organizations in order to make sure all our residents are supported. People who are unhoused are also our neighbors. They're our friends. They have, they should receive the same amount of support as other people. We always, in that room, we talk about housing first, how essential it is to make sure that people have housing and then that helps with other services. So I think housing first is super important. So the city does have a program right now, faith and housing, that they're working with different houses of faith in order to incorporate and build one of their land to provide housing. One great example of that is Coggo Presbyterian, right off the Gold Line, which I think is important, making sure we have housing here, existing transit is essential. But that helps chronically unhoused individuals. I think we need to continue to have those conversations. We need to continue to be innovative. How churches, second to CMS, the most land in Charlotte. So they should be working with us to make solutions to these problems.
Dr. Blanchett in here, how are you?
Good morning.
How can you ensure us that you will not be a rubber stamp of the mayor and her initiatives? And also, I want to hear about how this city is almost overloaded with condos, things like that, where people cannot afford to stay there. And it's the word on the street is that one day, who knows, the water, whatever, it might run out. And so we're in overload right now. So what are y'all going to do in order to not everything rubber stamp the mayor? Because the word on the street is that she looks for people who can rubber stamp.
Dr. Blanchett, good morning. Always good to see you. I think, number one, I have never been a follower or rubber stamp. I have always been a vocal advocate for the things that I plead most strongly and standing ten toes down. If people are running in one direction, very much running, you can be sure that I'm probably the one person running the other. So this is part of the reason why I've chosen to run as an unaffiliated candidate and do the hard work of earning a place on the ballot, because I will not be about anyone's agenda other than the people. So I am not made or designed to be a rubber stamp. And so that will not happen in my representation. On the question of condos going up, I have been hearing a lot from all the people that I've spoken to across this district during my signature campaign, and your concern is shared. I think that Joy has spoken a lot about community benefits agreements. I think that we need a better communication system so that residents can get ahead of these developments and make demands of these builders who are coming to our communities, building housing and changing the character and the integrity and the dynamics of neighborhoods that have been there.
Thank you for your question. I think that it's really essential that, one, people do the work and read through everything. I think this is partly why I've been so successful with my neighborhood, it's the fact that I like to read the fine print. I like to ask the question, why? So I don't plan on rubber stamping anything, because I think it's important to understand, one, how is this going to impact our neighborhoods? How is this going to impact our schools? Oftentimes, I like to read the rezonings, and I think that CMS can do a better job of really giving a real answer about how some of these rezonings in new neighborhoods are going to impact the schools. We know that many of our schools have trailers and are overcrowded. So I think those are important questions to ask. That's why I'm committed to making sure that I do the research, I'm not just going to come to the meetings, I'm prepared. Anyone who knows me knows that I'm about doing the work and doing, and being about business. Overcrowded with condos, that is concerning. I think that that is part of those conversations. I think that oftentimes, we're not giving people the infrastructure to support themselves with the HOAs, which I talked about earlier. They can help make sure there's affordability so that people can live in the community. So I'd love to chat more about that. Sorry.
Good morning. My name is Darnia Libber, and you kind of answered some of this anyway, but I framed the question, so I'm going to ask it anyway. Just heard on the news yesterday, a father of five was killed and about four people in the day have been murdered. How would you address the root causes of crime, such as poverty and lack of opportunity, in addition to supporting law enforcement?
So yeah, I think those wraparound services are essential. Off sound services and more county services, I think the city and the county needs to do a better job of working together. These are residents in both, you know, residents in city or county residents as well, and they should be collaborating to make sure that we're providing those support. Also think it's very important, when people are out and about in the community, that's one thing I really like about the Alternatives to Violence Program we have at Nations Board, they're bringing those wraparound services. They're talking about, do you need help with housing? Do you need help with getting a job? I think we need to understand the why. And when applicable, people may need additional training. I think it's really important, one thing that we need to have real conversations about, how do we bring services to people instead of people having to go to get the services? So I know the city, the county is creating a community resource there on Nations Board that's supposed to break ground and think now at her twenty twenty-nine, that's not good enough. That's not good enough for our residents. While you may not be able to build that whole center right now, how do we use existing buildings that are empty or underutilized to bring the services to the people that need them? So I think that's the type of leadership that I will bring, innovative thinking. We don't need a big building to get things done to work for the people.
Did you need for me to answer this question as well? Okay, happy to. Thank you. I also saw that story, and I think that clearly we have to think about this through the lens of economic opportunity. And so because people, nobody is born a criminal despite what some of our elected officials federally have said, nobody is born that way. So I think this question again about the why instead of the what is really important. And then, of course, we're thinking about this through the lens of public safety. It requires more than reactionary politics, right? Especially after tragic incidents like the one you just mentioned and the transit killing, which have been politicized. We really have to think about how we bring all stakeholders to the table, the nonprofit community, the city, the county, CMS, and how we're going to be creating opportunities for people to be able to have a living and a life and be a mental part of our society and not go out and commit these heinous crimes. And of course, the mental health piece, really those investments too. We are going to achieve these goals of addressing our seemingly most intractable social problems by investing in people and infrastructure. And that's what I would advocate for as the District Three representative.
Good days, everybody. So there's a book called Root Shot, which basically studies within different, specifically within our community, how urban rural and displacement caused a lot of problems, including like the AIDS epidemic, mental health, instability, violence within our communities. Would you all be willing to actually look back and address these instances where essentially we were essentially attacked by entire federal government using our own tax dollars to destroy us?
Good morning, Travis. Thank you for the question. I love that you always come to this historical events, particularly around Black community. So thank you for always being here and engaging in this really thoughtful way. Yes, despite the attacks on, you know, Black history and the attempts to erase that, I think it's really important that we stand strong and that we really stand on truth and tell the whole story. And so this idea of root shot really is interesting to me. I haven't read the book, but certainly we know that systemically, things have happened in our community and that these stories are worth telling and sharing. So yes, I would be willing to speak about that, read about that, learn more about that, and more importantly, think about ways that we push back against this effort to erase this and really prevent any additional root shot going forward.
Thank you for that question. As someone who, all of my degrees are African-American history, this is something, wow, that's not currently what I do, I still bring that lens to anything that I do, because it's essential, even with my work as an environmentalist, all these things are systemic, right? Under the canopy, when we talk about tree canopy, that's by design, unfortunately, because it's systemic racism. Just to talk a little bit about that, yes, while those things are in the past, those are still in our present. We know, I think I was told November thirteenth or fourteenth, they're going to be releasing the maps for Seventy Seven South expansion, right? Seventy Seven South, going from uptown all the way to South Carolina, that's mostly going through our neighborhoods. So this isn't just history, this is still happening. How do we still have these conversations? How do we make sure that everybody has a seat at the table? How do we make sure we minimize the impact to Black and Brown homeowners and also businesses, right? So I think there are a lot of conversations to have about that. I am very concerned about that, and that's part of the reason why community benefits agreements are so imperative, because they are going to impact us.
So me, good morning. Hey, I'm Jay Hill. I am a board member of West Boulevard Neighborhood Coalition, Western Wilkinson Merchant Association, Parents Still Live in Banjo Woods off of West Boulevard. My question is relative to the transportation tax, how do we protect West Boulevard if the transportation tax is approved and moved forward?
Good morning, today. I think the way that we protect, and we know that there's been a lot of, there's been a whole roadshow that's going on, trying to convince people to vote yes. The first thing I want to say, that good ideas, they know their own merit. You don't need lobbyists, corporate attorneys, consultants to sell the community something. We can figure out what's good for us. I think that the way that we protect West Boulevard, Wilkinson, and all of the other communities that will suffer displacement, is to make sure that when we're asking for things, we're not just accepting an MOU, a memorandum of understanding. We need these promises to be codified in the agreement. Otherwise, we stand to experience the same betrayals and falsehoods and empty promises that we've experienced in the past. And so I think that's the way we do it, we make sure that it's codified in agreement, just like the PAYE Act and other things that we know are going to happen, empty promises we heard before, let's not fall for that.
Thank you for your question. And this is something that Ricky Hall and I have a lot of conversations about, also received his endorsement for a district thing. Hey, gotta put it out there, sorry. So some of the conversations that he and I have are about those community benefits. So let's say that this one said sales tax passes. How do we protect our community? And part of that is workforce development. How do we hold corporations responsible for making sure that they have a percentage of these jobs to Black and Brown people? How are they also helping train people in our neighborhood so that not only are they getting current jobs, but jobs in the future? We know that this influxion of cash is going to bring opportunities, and those opportunities should be benefiting the people who are going to be impacted, including people in West Boulevard. So that's one big thing I think that is important, having those real-world conversations. How do we minimize displacement? How do we help get the word out about homestead acts and different things so that people can continue to live in the community but also thrive with different opportunities?
Oh, I think, good morning, I'm Cheryl Emanuel, and my question is, how do you balance or prioritize the requests from the different neighborhoods in District Three? I often hear you reference the areas that you live in, but what about those unvoiced, unthonged neighbors that often may not know how to lift their voices in every meeting? How do you get to them? And how can we assure that your vote is only not for where you live?
So I think part of that is based on having conversations like we're having today. So I'm not new to this work, I've been doing the work for nine years. I've been going to the West Boulevard Neighborhood Coalition for years. I've been speaking with Steel Creek Residents Association. I think it's important to work with neighborhood leaders in areas to make sure that we are hearing what they have to say about different things. One thing I'm really excited for as the future District Three representative is creating a District Three coalition, similar to what Renee Johnson has for her District Four. I think that's very important, particularly for some smaller neighborhoods. How do you make sure that everybody has a seat at the table, not just the big guys, right? West Boulevard Neighborhood Coalition has done great work, they have the infrastructure, but how do we make sure that everybody has the skills to be just as successful as them? And I think part of that is us working together as a community and neighborhood groups. They're doing great things, how do we learn from each other? While the city has workshops oftentimes, I think that we see people who are doing the work, good work, how do we learn from them, emulate that so that everyone has a seat at the table?
Absolutely, that's such a great point, building a coalition across.
Thank you. Okay.
Good morning, Cheryl Emanuel. Oh, love, it's so good to see you. Thank you for the question. I am not a Charlotte native, but I got to the city in nineteen ninety-two. I have been here for thirty-three years. And so I have built strong relationships across District Three and across this city. But more importantly, during my signature campaign, which took me the entire summer, collecting two thousand seven hundred and seventy-one signatures on paper to get to one thousand three hundred and eighty-two, I began developing relationships all across District Three, not just in the West Boulevard corridor, which I've had longstanding relationships there, just through my work with food justice and housing and the many issues that I've been working to address since I got to Charlotte in ninety-two. But also, with the people who are out knocking on doors for me right now, all across District Three, leaving literature on doors, asking people to get out and vote. I have begun the work of building neighborhood cabinet leaders who will be eyes and ears for me in community once I'm elected to this state, baby. And so I think those people who are living in the community, because it's not monolithic, District Three is large, and so, sorry, Ms. Patty, I'm so sorry, but that's the answer to my question. I hope I was in that good.
Rodney Collins, also a candidate for SHARE. So my question to you, you're elected, what is the one main priority or thing that you would like to accomplish during your term?
So it would be disingenuous for me to sit here and say that I'm going to get on the council and address all these priorities that are important to me, not just disingenuous, but probably naive. It would be a thorny curve. But I think, given the current structure of the council, as an independent candidate, I would want to have a unified impact on this council, more pragmatism, more collaboration, more compromise, and more shared vision around what is good for the city. And so if I could accomplish that in addition to my own priorities relative to my platform, then I think that I will have been successful in my first term.
Thank you. I think that's a really great question. I talk a lot about community benefits agreements. And to be honest, I didn't really know that I was actually doing some of that until about a year ago, when I really started having those conversations to understand what they are. I think it's important, and I actually had a conversation with someone about this yesterday, helping our neighborhoods and our residents come up with those community benefits agreements, maybe doing a one-pager to figure out, okay, you want to come and build this development in my neighborhood? We'd like for you to reserve ten percent for affordable housing. That's not something that is a city councilperson that we can do, because this is a Dillon Law State, but we can empower our residents to have those conversations and to make those demands of developers and different organizations that want to come into our city. So I think that's super important, empowering people to create the change and create the neighborhoods and the communities that they want. So that's something that I'm already starting to think through, will be working with different organizations like the Housing Justice Coalition, about how do about how do we create opportunities for people to create better communities? And part of that is by holding people accountable. And I'm excited for that one pager.
Mr. Hill.
Rob Helman, Queens City Robotics. Question for you is, again, I apologize in advance because I'm a banker. I think about money. So my question is, how do you plan to pay for your priorities? Is there room in the current budget? Do you plan to raise taxes? Or are there additional untapped revenue sources that you see that will allow you to provide those wraparound services? Those things that you build those facilities, do the things that you say you want to do?
So I think part of that is kind of that innovative thinking. When we talk about wraparound services, one thing I've noticed with the housing trust fund dollars, oftentimes, they're working with Ascent Housing to create permanent, oh no, it's not permanent, preserve naturally occurring affordable housing. That's really important that we think through that, particularly with the twenty forty plan. It's telling you where places are likely to be displaced. So one, using the data intentionally to make sure that we're thinking through, where do we need to protect our residents? But then with that, with our housing trust fund dollars, we're often can work with Atrium Health. So for example, where I live in Nations Ford, or not far from us, Lake Miss Apartments, which is one of those that I talked about with Ascent Housing to preserve naturally occurring affordable housing. They have services within there. They have a health worker there. And they also, they share it with Lake Miss and Shelton Knolls. So it's important to use the existing infrastructure. We have apartment buildings that, you know, multiple apartments are empty, right? We could be providing some of those services in those buildings where people live. We don't always have to build a new building. We can think outside the box to bring the services that our residents need. So I don't always think that it has to require a whole lot of money. I just think it requires thinking innovatively, thinking outside the box. How do we bring the services to the people now?
Thank you, Mr. Helman. Cash means everything around. Money. So I think your question is very valid, like how are we going to pay for these things, right? The priorities that we mentioned, wraparound services, like addressing the need for, you know, housing for workforce and unhoused populations. I think the first thing you do is look at the city's budget, right? Because a budget reflects your priorities. So whatever's at the top, you know that's going to get the bulk of the budget. So we start there. And then looking at that budget, you think about auditing to figure out inefficiencies in that middle layer where they might be consultants and others. But more important, I think that we have to think about this, and in truth, that government is not structured to address all of these problems. They could not possibly do that. So we have to be thinking about public-private partnerships. We need to bring all stakeholders to the table to make these investments because we're all paying for it in one way or another. Whether it's our feelings of being unsafe on our streets or our concerns about not having housing, government can't do it alone. And so I think we have to have shared responsibility and shared investment. And that's how we are able to get it done and not have the burden on residents in terms of increasing taxes and other means that are punitive for the people that live in the city.
Good morning. My name is Mike Lilly. I keep hearing the question coming from this direction, how? I keep hearing the question coming from that direction, how? Do you guys have, or you ladies, where does job opportunities and bringing jobs into this city? Because I can't find a house that costs ten dollars if I don't have a job. Where does job opportunities and business coming in to help us have jobs rate on your priority list?
So, thank you for the question, Mr. Lilly. I think jobs are one thing, and North Carolina is known for being a business-friendly state. So we have a lot of jobs coming here, a lot of people coming here. But the jobs aren't for the people who are at the entry level or the people who have been here. It's a work of friend, it's a business-friendly state, but not necessarily a work of friendship. So we have to think about how we raise wages for people to be able to afford to live. Because affordability is relative, right? But then also, I talked a little bit about AI and technology taking away that entry-level layer very quickly. And so in the coming years, that will be a bigger challenge that we're facing. And so one of my priorities in terms of my platform is building a small business ecosystem. How do we invest in people's entrepreneurial skills to help them to have the technical support, the expertise, and the investment to scale businesses and make a living in a life where they are? And so I think we need jobs, and we need to be invested in a small, investing in a small business ecosystem in District Three and across the city, so that people are not relying upon a job that could go away and are able to earn and live and stay here.
So, jobs are very high on my priority list. When we talk about opportunities, a lot of that unfortunately relates to being able, you know, to afford the life that we live here in Charlotte. And we know that for many people, particularly young people, it isn't affordable. So I think helping people have the opportunity to create the life that they want for themselves is key, and oftentimes, that involves job opportunities. So I think first, we have to have conversations with CMS, CPCC, all the colleges, how are we preparing people for jobs in the future? And as a former educator, those are conversations that we were having. And part of that is critical thinking. How do we help people help themselves? I definitely agree with the small business activation. I think that's essential. And I think, I love the fact that West Boulevard Neighborhood Coalition has created that infrastructure for the small businesses in their area. That's something I'd like to see District Three-wide. How do we use some of the strategies and tools that other organizations are creating and emulate that to support all of our different small businesses in the area? We know there are small businesses in Steel Creek. We have a thriving Black middle class in that area. How are we supporting them? In Nations Ford, in Wilmore, right? So how do we help create the infrastructure for people to be successful with jobs? Also, would range your transportation is important, right? I read a study that says about seven thousand, eight thousand dollars is what it costs to have a car a year for someone. That's a lot of money, right? If someone could use public transit instead of relying on a car, that could be a great opportunity and help with affordability and access to get to jobs, right?
Good morning. Elliot Royal, West Boulevard Neighborhood Coalition. The city of Charlotte has designated corridors of opportunity all over our city. And I believe West Boulevard is one of the most historically, and continues to be a disinvestment, and they perpetuate a systematic racism in terms of their investment. How do you ensure that you uplift the corridors of opportunity in your district to make sure that we're not left out on the financial decisions of infrastructure investments?
Thank you for that. Yeah, with corridors, I've heard a lot from different organizations and corridors. It does kind of seem to me sometimes that maybe one or two corridors of opportunity receive more investment than others. Yeah, don't get me started. Focus on what I'm talking about. Yeah, so when we talk about that investment, I think first is, we have to have real conversations with people. And some of our elected officials, some of our city staff, they need to be open to having those real conversations. I mean, we are, we're all seeing it. How do we bring that intentional leadership and that investment to all parts of District Three, particularly when it comes to corridors of opportunity for West Boulevard? So I attend y'all's meetings on a regular because y'all were modeling what needs to be done. And the city and the county should be having those conversations with y'all. Y'all should have a seat at the table. They shouldn't be making decisions without you all. In my personal opinion. And as a District Three rep, I will fight for that. Because I know that y'all live in the community, y'all know the issues that are going on. And y'all should be included in creating the change and improvements in that community.
Hi Elliot, good morning. Did you want me to answer this question as well? Okay. Well, I'm thinking about this issue in much of the same way. We know that the investment has not been equitable. And so when I think about the structure of the city council, where the work really gets done, it is done in the committees. And so as your elected representative for District Three, I would be sure that I am on the Committee for Economic Development Jobs as well as Budget and Interior Governance Relations, to be sure that I'm a loud voice in that room for equitable investments relative to the corridors of opportunity. So that is how I would address that. And of course, engaging the people who are in the corridor of West Boulevard and other disenfranchised corridors that have not gotten that equitable investments, to be sure that those voices are included in those comments and that loudness in those committee meetings.
Good morning, Robert Collins again. You mentioned, Ms. Robin, if you were elected, the time lapse that happens whenever you step into a new position. And this is for you and Joy as well. If you are elected, who is your mentor that's going to help you to decrease that time so that you can actually be effective?
Thank you, Mr. Helman. That's a great question. So I have relationships with a former District Three representative. Malana Mayfield has been a great mentor and has really given me a lot of information, has already begun teaching me. Of course, Victoria Wallington has done a great job. I have a stronger relationship with her. But of course, cultivating those relationships with the people who have been in District Three and represented that district over a long period of time and done a lot of great work would be those what I would look to for decreasing that learning curve to be able to step right in and get up to speed as possible.
So I have several mentors. And I think that's essential, that we listen to a wide variety of people in the district in order to be successful. District Three, as I always say, is a very diverse district. You know, we have South End, we have West Boulevard, we have LoSo, we have Steel Creek, we have Pawtucket, right? It's a large area, and it's important that we have someone who is not only going to listen to the residents, but also learn from previous people who have held the position. So I'm very, I talk about community benefits agreement a lot, yeah. But I do think it's important that we have those conversations so that we make sure the development and change and opportunities benefit everybody. And I think, like I mentioned earlier, Ron Leeper, former city council rep, he has done that already. He has created those community benefits agreements to minimize the impact that the airport has had on residents in that area. Those are continued conversations. People are still having issues with the expansion of the airport. And those are real conversations that we have to have to figure out how do we minimize that? How do we make sure that people can stay in their house with dignity and pride? So I think those are a lot of conversations to have. And I look forward to continuing to receive mentorship from people who are willing to help. Because I think this isn't just something I can do by myself. We all have to work on this together to create the community that we want.
Misses, you've alluded to the journey that you have taken in order to get onto the ballot as an independent. Can you explain, one, what made you go that route as opposed to registering as a Democrat? And do you feel that there is more that you can accomplish or make happen as an independent as opposed to being registered as a Democrat?
Or Republican, to be fair and balanced. Yes, thank you for the question. So I should be clear, I was born into a Democratic family. And I made the decision, probably as I got to be in my middle years, in my thirties, to change my affiliation because I started looking at the fact that I felt like I didn't own my vote. That there was a lot of language around being a reliable base and being a loyal and having the party that I'd been born into parachute in during election and ask for money and then disappear. And so I also got out to the world and continued to expand my worldview. And I met Republican people who were centrist and moderate. I hope those people still exist. I don't remember if it's true. But I really could appreciate their perspective and their values. And so I wanted the opportunity to reclaim my vote and own it for myself. And so unaffiliated made sense to me. I didn't want to have to vote a straight ticket. I wanted to vote policies, not name recognition. I wanted to vote for the values that resonated with values of my own. And so I think, yes, being able to work across the council despite party affiliation, I think will be a strength that I will bring to the council. Frankly, I don't have beef with either party, but there is a Democratic monopoly on this council. And I think that a pragmatic, unifying, centrist voice will be very helpful in to bridge the divide. So thank you for the question.
Oh, sorry.
Yes. You mentioned churches owning property. And then we know that historically, the churches were pivotal in civil rights, voting rights, and boycotting and picketing, and because they didn't risk the chance of losing their jobs because the congregation supported them. What do you see the role of the church in your serving as city council to affect results and to support you and to get out to the people? What do you see because of the controversy of church and state? That's my question.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that. I do think it's important that we talk about the role of churches in our community. How do they continue to uplift the Black community? Help with not just voter turnout, right? We can have souls to the polls now coming Sunday because Republicans didn't get rid of that for the general election. They got rid of that for the primary. So, one, I think, like I said before, I'm a data nerd. I like looking at data. I like looking at Polaris as a former HOA president. I like to look and see who owns what. You'd be surprised how much land and property so many churches own. So I think having conversations about how do we work together to help our collective community? They're congregation members, right? They're neighbors, right? They don't live in isolation. We're all in this together. So I think having those conversations, I think the city's Housing and Faith Initiative is a really great opportunity. If we look at Do Greater Lab, one of their labs is actually in Shiloh Baptist Church. How do we think innovatively? We know that people aren't going to church as much as they used to, right? If we look at the numbers and stats, I'm sort of that data nerd in me. How do we think innovatively about spaces that churches hold, right? Could we have community centers in some of that space that's not being used? Could we have daycare services, right? We know that daycare is, particularly when it comes to women, can be a huge barrier to making sure that we are staying in the workforce and able to get good jobs. And even if you leave the workforce, what's that going to do, your 401K or your retirement? So how are you thinking holistically when it comes to our houses and faith?
I'll try to answer quickly other than answering all the questions. First of all, I want to point out, I agree that churches sit on a tremendous amount of land just by the sheer amount of churches that we have per capita in North Carolina and across this country. I have also done a lot of work with an organization called Faithlands, a national organization that is working with churches to think about housing and other community needs as attendance rates have gone down, churches across the country. But of course, as a Black woman that has been connected to a church and a church home, as a Black woman understanding the armor bearers of the church, which are the Black women in community that get so much done, I'm always going to be connected to the church, seeking their guidance, seeking the support, thinking, seeking their innovation and their generosity in terms of thinking about how we solve foreseeably intractable issues in our communities. They are part of the stakeholder group that has to be at the table to think about housing and other needs in our community. And so I will stay rooted and grounded. And I mentioned in another meeting earlier this week, my steps are ordered. So I have to have the church in my life personally and in this endeavor to win this seat for District Three.
Good morning. My apologies for being late. I know you both have environmental concerns. On council, how will you express your concerns for environmental justice and health for our city?
So like we mentioned before, I think being thoughtful of the data. So like we mentioned before, I think being thoughtful of the data. I also like, not just Polaris, but also enjoy looking at the quality of life explorer. I think it's really important that we're intentional with anything that we're doing, be that food insecurity, our unhoused community, all of those things, the city and the county has done a really great job of collecting that data. So I think first, looking at the data to drive the needs of the community. So I think that's really important when it comes to environmental justice. As before mentioning that private-public partnership, the government isn't going to be able to do all of this ourselves. Those are conversations, we need to find allies, such as Houses of Faith, like we mentioned, but also nonprofits. So I work for an environmental nonprofit and I'm notorious for bringing that nonprofit anywhere I go, right? So if I'm in a community, I'm probably like, hmm, how can I help with what those needs are? And I think that's imperative, that we're using that data to be thoughtful. How are we reducing historical injustices when we're talking about systemic issues that have been going on? When we talk about the highway expansion, we already know that Black and Brown communities are hotter than their more affluent peers because we have a lower tree canopy than they do. So how are we remedying that? Then we talk about asthma rates, all of these things are connected. So how will we bring partners to the table to help remedy that? Because environmental justice, people should be just as concerned about what's going on in Black and Brown communities. We don't live in isolation. How do we make sure all of our neighbors are receiving the tools that they need to be successful?
Thank you, I appreciate the question. I think I would try to impress upon my colleagues on the council the importance of environmental stewardship, particularly with all of the development that's going on in our city and our region where our forests and our tree canopy is being removed and how we are going to mitigate the adverse impacts. You don't have to be an environmentalist to understand that our planet is heating up, that our cities are hotter, and that trees are not just something that beautify our cities. They do an important job of capturing carbon and cooling our cities off. With all of the highway expansion, we have to think about this holistically. And yes, we have to engage multiple stakeholders, including our nonprofit sector, who are doing work around sustainability and environmentalism. We have to engage all stakeholders to really address this need to be environmentalists, whether you call yourself that or not. It is critically important to our survival and our quality of life in this city and on
Okay, I have a colleague question, okay? And I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to read this. It's kind of long, but I'm gonna try to, you know. It's about the city manager of Charlotte. We have a city manager. And he's been under scrutiny lately, okay? This city has continually, continuously held a AAA bond rating, the higher rating given to municipalities, no tax increase for the past five years. We are the gold standard for cities, yet we are questioning his performance. What do you say to that? Do you support the city manager? I'm trying to get to the question here, but tell me how you... Just talk about that for a minute.
I didn't hear a question, but I guess I can speak generally to that. Understanding the structure of our government here, we are a city council, city manager governing structure. And so our city manager is super important in the operations and the business of the city. And so that we have had this AAA rating and the tax increase, I think it's a plus, but at the same time, I think that everyone who is in service to this city should, is open to scrutiny, that we should ask questions and we should be like investigating performance and really thinking through that pragmatically to make sure that we are supporting the strongest governing structure that we possibly can. And I think our city manager, according to the metrics that we know, has been doing a good job, but of course that is not static, we should really keep an eye on that. Thank you.
So based on what I've seen, I think that any job performance, you continue to reevaluate how someone is doing, you know, with technology the way it is, and our country continuing to evolve and change, I think it's important that we reassess some performance evaluation and criteria that someone may have. I think it's important that we have conversations with residents and different stakeholders, business owners, figure out what is a prior priority to them and then use that to drive what performance is for people in our expectations. I think that we also have to have a conversation about how do we help city manager with conversations with city staff? How do we create opportunities for people to engage, right? Is there a standard when it comes to returning emails? But there are little things that I personally, as a CMS teacher, I was told I had to return an email within 24 business hours. Those are some questions that I would also ask. So while I'm sure he's doing an excellent job, I think that we need to continue to have conversations. Are you meeting the expectations of the residents? And realize that as people move here and as people travel, priorities are going to change. And are you still meeting the priorities of the residents? And if so, great, but everybody can improve, myself included, so.
Okay, we have one last question, Ms. Avery. Thank you. I would like to propose that you guys share the job. You're both great. But my, what, my comment, no one, everyone probably in this room knows how I feel about the city manager. So what I want to make sure is that when not only you guys, but others get in office, that we make sure that we give all individuals the benefit of the doubt.
Yes, ma'am.
And we don't look at the salary and say, oh, that's too high. We base it upon merit and what the person actually does. I don't have a question. Okay, we want to thank these two ladies for coming, these two candidates for District Three. We very, very, very appreciate you. I think this is maybe the third time you've been here, but thank you so much.
It's been a lot on the hot seat.
Thank you so much. And we're gonna leave y'all alone, okay?
Yes.
Okay. You can stay if you want to.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I do want to introduce and for him to come up, Mr. Eric Blackman. Yes. Mr. Blackman is with the Charlotte Macklinburg Black Heritage Committee and on November 15th as a Teresa Elder Trailblazer Award Luncheon. And he's going to talk for a minute about that. Thank you so much.
Good morning and thank you, Jack, in the leadership group for its great forum that's been around for quite a while. I will be, in front of you very shortly, I just want to talk about an event that we're going to have November the 15th at the Charlotte Museum of History. I'm sure most of you are familiar with that venue. It's from 11 to 2 o'clock. It's a celebration, a breathtaking celebration of Teresa Clark Elder, who is a, was a nurse by profession. She passed away in the height of the COVID pandemic at the age of 93. But she started the Charlotte Macklinburg Black Heritage Committee, which is a group basically to celebrate our history, to preserve it. And this event celebrates her life and it celebrates her work in the community. It's the first opportunity since the pandemic we've had for her admirers and people who knew her to publicly celebrate her. So we're asking that you come to this event, that you purchase a ticket, a ticket, a single ticket is $60. It's just going to be a love fest, a celebration of her life and local history. One of the things that we've learned, especially in this environment, that we have to be the preservers of our own history. We have to tell our stories and we have to make sure that we own those stories. And so that's the mission of the Charlotte Macklinburg Black Heritage Committee. We also have sponsor opportunities. And there's, we also have sponsoring opportunities that you can talk to me about once I take my seat, to help us support this event. But please, November the 15th, from 11 to 2 PM, the Teresa Elder Trailblazer Award Luncheon. This year, the trailblazers, and they're always people who have contributed and blazed trails in the community, will be Dr. Sonia Ramsey, who is a professor at UNC Charlotte. She wrote about birthing. And other women who are not very well-known but have done a great job telling our stories and making sure that we are heard. And then Lynn Birkins, who is the founder of Q City Metro. These are our honorees this year, so please come and please consider being a sponsor, as I said, once I take my seat. Thank you to this group, to the Sarah Stevenson Tuesday Forum for allowing me this time to speak. Have a good day.
Thank you. For the next announcement, we would like to bring up Mr. Sean Kennedy.
Yes.
Has a major announcement on his hands he would like to bring to the forefront?
Good morning, family. Good morning, family. All right. My name is Sean Kennedy. I'm with Kennedy Properties and Development, Prosperity Alliance. I'm this young brother that's trying to make my grandmother proud and do things for our community. So what we're here to discuss today is the historic Excelsior. This evening at 6 o'clock, if you're available, we'd love to have you in the building, we will be presenting in front of the county commissioners on the rebirth of the Excelsior. Excelsior is a lighthouse, it is an icon, it is history, it is all people and it needs to come back. So over the last few months, I've dove into trying to figure out a way to bring the Excelsior back. And we're close. We're close to it. Thank you. We're close. It's been 10 years since the Excelsior closed its doors and Charlotte lost a big part of itself in the closing stores. So if you have the time, you have the energy, I would love to have you in the building to show the city, the county, the state that the community wants the Excelsior back. And I'll be up front fighting and trying to make this thing happen. So with your love, your support, we can make this thing happen and that's all I got to say. So thank you for everything, thank you for listening. The most important part, yeah, the Government Center, 600 East Fourth Street, 6 PM.
Where can we find out more about the plans with the Excelsior?
Absolutely. You can go on the county's website, you can go to Kennedy Properties, go to my website, learn more about it, and I'll be here, we can rap. So I'm here and I got Dania in the back, she can also fill you in anything about our plans with the Excelsior and what we plan to do and make it a community resource, bring it back and hopefully have some of these meetings, if possible. Love to have you. I'll provide the breakfast. All right, love y'all.
Announcement, okay. Thank you. Please call the county commissioners and tell them to support the city. I believe it's 100% behind Sean. So please call the county and ask them to support Sean for this evening. I want to say thank you, over 10 of you attended the event yesterday with Mo Green, thank you for coming. Oh, Jessica, you just say you attended?
No, it's me.
Thank you. Also, you've received this, but we're going to pass it out again, the Rhythm and Roots Jazzy Blues at the Carolina Theater, it is going to be spectacular. I know y'all can afford $75, come on. So come out and support and go ahead, go online and get your tickets, any problems, let me know. Also, this is really important, it's a conversation with Andover, you wonder what is Andover? It's one of the most prominent, dynamic schools and it's a private school. And both of my sons attended post-grad year at Phillips Academy in Andover, in Boston. And it's an opportunity, I know that one of my sons who had like 800 on the SAT after he finished there, he had over 1,300. They do a spectacular job, a post-grad year, but they also start in like ninth grade. This is a wonderful opportunity for your kids. The Associate Director of Admissions will be here at this facility on Sunday, November 2nd at 2 o'clock. And the Associate Director just happens to be my son, Terrell Iverson. So you guys, if you have kids, please let them know this is a wonderful experience for them. And basically, if they have the grades, you can probably go up there with a full scholarship because it costs about $60,000 a year, but most of the kids are given a full scholarship, especially those who look like me. So thank you so very much. Other announcements?
I heard it out there, this Saturday, October 25th, Lit Fest is going down Little Rock and Park events. We're looking forward to working with West Boulevard Coalition, Charlotte Macklinburg Library, Robinson Pages. My brother's keeper, so many of you are going to be there, we're going to turn literacy into that spark and love for reading. Jonas, October 25th, Lit Fest, 12 to 2 PM.
Thank you. West Boulevard is hosting a transit conversation on Tuesday, October 28th, at Greater Mount Sinai Baptist Church at 6 PM. Strongly encourage you all to come out and hear from your residents directly how they feel about the upcoming transit tax. In addition, on November 1st is Legacy Fest, which is a Coalition's birthday party. There's flyers back here, so join us for celebration from 12 to 3 on November 1st at 2901 Revere Bearden. Thank you.
Good morning, I have several announcements. Mrs. Stevenson's birthday is this coming Sunday, October the 26th. And she was on the board of the Gassimini Enrichment Center and on next Wednesday, they are having their 50th anniversary. And this organization was founded by Bishop George Battle. The event will be Wednesday, as I said, at the Fairfield Inn in the sweet Charlotte Uptown from 11:30 until 1 o'clock. Also, the Baby Sword Road Vocational Trade Center, they deal in the trades, heating, cooling, electrical and plumbing systems. They have openings for free and reduced training. Contact Francis Hall at 980-349-4067. And on this coming Sunday, October the 26th, is Lummick Center, they will be having a Transit Tax Forum from 4 to 6. And the panelists will include Commissioner Rodriguez and State Representatives Majid and Mohammed. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Hello, everybody. As many of you know, I've been engaged and involved in robotics for a long time, probably since about 2011 and 12. Well, recently, yesterday I ran into Shay Abdullah over at the, 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 Mo Green's presentation. He said, why don't you come to Tuesday morning Breakfast Forum and let people know what happened to you? So because of that experience, because I've been engaged and involved in it for such a long time, I recently became president and CEO of what's called Queen City Robotics Alliance. And so wanted to, that alliance, basically, if you think of AAU basketball or pop or Pop Warner football, think of Queen City Robotics Alliance as basically AAU robotics. And it's a way that, and it was mentioned earlier by the two panelists above, that AI and robotics are eliminating jobs, lower, you know, entry-level jobs. They're, they're eliminating, you know, uh, all sorts of jobs. So the part of what we do as a robotics alliance is we basically train kids in how to build, design, build, test robots, code robots. But not only that, they also learn leadership because we set up each robotics team as a company. And so, as, as the engineer, but an engineering company. And so while engineering, account engineering, electrical engineering are important. So they're equally important to marketing, government outreach, and other, their accounting. And so students get exposed to each and every one of those disciplines and get an opportunity to figure out early in life what they're good at, what they want to do, so they can make a very important decision early on so that they don't end up, you know, say, hey, I want to be electrical engineer, and get in their second year of engineering school and say, hey, this is not what I want to do. Or get in, say, I want to do marketing, and get in their second year of college to figure out, hey, I don't want to do marketing, I want to do engineer. We want to get them started off early on. Ladies and gentlemen, I would say specifically for the folks that are sitting in this room who have the same hue as my skin, our folks are well underrepresented in this area. And I implore each and every one of you to send me your kids as well. I implore each and every one of you adults to help me coach and manage those kids so that they see somebody that looks like them and are excited about being there as opposed to coming into the room and saying, well, this is not for me. Two opportunities, I get off the mic because I don't want to pass my time. Um, November 8th, we have a STEM Fest at the Pearl. Uh, this has been sponsored by the Pearl. As they're, uh, we're working with them to try to get folks wrapped in. The event goes from 1 to 4. Uh, you can come and go or just stay all day. Registration is required, and I'll send you the link so that you can have that. And then there's the four. Queen City Robotics Alliance, we are having a Hops and Bots fundraiser on November 13th at No Doubt Brewing Company, where there'll be robotics demonstrations. And, um, DeAndrea Salvador will be making the presentation of our women in STEM. Thank you.
Is there a website?
Website for Queen City Robotics is queencityroboticsalliance.org. Thank you.
All right. So before we get out of here, just one more quick announcement from, online from this one. For Dre, Dre, today will be a campaign lunch party next Tuesday between 6 and 7:30 at the Real African Art Gallery for Mr. Mathadu for North Carolina House District 106. Again, Mathadu for North Carolina House District 106 Lunch Party, next Tuesday, 6 to 7:30 at the Real African Art Gallery. All right. We want to thank everyone for your attention, uh, for coming. Uh, before we dismiss, we would like to give a very special shout out and happy birthday to Ms. Carlene Ivory.
I know, right?
All right. Thank you, everyone, coming out. God bless you. Good night.